All right, good evening. Today is Thursday, September 8th. It is 6:30 PM. This is a meeting of the Olentangie Board of Education. It's a regular meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabroco?
Present.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Dr. Wallach?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
Give a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All right, please call the roll, Ms. Hatfield.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dabroco?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so the board presence report. So tonight, we have three presentation items. One on student well-being updates, the second on transportation, and the third on staffing. So a full group of presentations. With that, I believe Mr. Lester would like to comment on the student well-being in the first meeting of that committee.
Yeah, thank you so much. So as we spoke at our last school board meeting, we finally populated our ad hoc committee on student mental health and well-being. We had about 20 people from across the community, including students, parents, staff members, district administrators, and board members. We had our first meeting last night, and it was truly an amazing experience to hear how much mental health has impacted members of the community, how important of an issue this is, and the different perspectives hearing from the students about how it's affected them and their friends and colleagues and their experiences, and teachers, how they're trying to incorporate this into their classroom. It was, we spent a lot of time getting to know each other and hearing those experiences, and then really trying to build up what the committee will do, because it's such a large topic to tackle. We brainstormed a lot. We put together some ideas that we're going to be working toward over the course of the year, and then making rolling recommendations, as well as a final report at the end of the year. So it was a great start. We're really looking forward to it. Dr. Dabroco has joined me on the committee, and we're just both so excited to work with the committee on it.
Great. Anything else from the board members?
Yeah, I mean, it was hard. It was emotionally, I mean, I was, it was hard. I think the biggest thing to emphasize is our kids come to us with a variety of needs, and the myth that you can teach kids without taking care of their basic needs was something we debunked pretty early on. So we need to make sure that we're meeting kids' basic needs, whether they need food or whether they need, you know, a late breakfast or something else is going on. So in collaboration with parents, it's a big deal that we're aware of that. Really thankful that that committee is moving forward.
Right. Anything else from the other board members on committee updates or anything? No? All right, let's roll right into the presentation items. First up is Dr. Alicia Berens, the Director of Student Well-Being. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm glad to be here with Dr. Berens and Mr. Lester. The board committee last night was fabulous, so it's very timely for me to follow up then with our student well-being update. So just to review, since you know we do have some new board members, but student well-being really looks at the non-academic barriers that our students are seeing in learning through our schools. The same if we need a mask allowed before we can balloon, so we have to make sure we're meeting those basic needs before students can actually learn. So making sure, you know, they have their basic needs met. Are they fed? Do they have clothing? And then, do they feel safe? And do they feel like they belong in school and in their classroom? And then giving them that sense of self-esteem and self-confidence, and then they can actually achieve full learning at that point. If any of those other areas are low or missing, then a student's not fully going to be learning anything that the teacher's talking about, because they're going to really be focusing on those other needs. And so in our student well-being umbrella, we cover a variety of topics. Mental health being a big focus, and then also, we have students who suffer from substance use issues. And then I also oversee the nurses and the physical health aspect. So the last two years, COVID had kind of overtook my job. I'm very thankful, knock on wood, that hopefully we're moving out of that. I'm just going to keep putting it in the universe. Safety and security. I work with Mr. Swazi a lot on our safety efforts, and then behavioral support for our students who have some behavioral concerns within the classroom as well. So I have some just general facts. I'm not going to read all these stats to you, but most of this is from just U.S. data, and then I do have some Olentangie data in here as well. But 49.5% of adolescents will have a mental health disorder at some point in their lives. So again, half of us will most likely have some kind of mental health issue, and that most likely starts in adolescence. And then most commonly diagnosed in our 3- to 17-year-olds is ADHD, anxiety, behavior problems, and depression. So looking at the U.S. version of Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which we also do at the county level, I have some stats on depression and suicide. So from the U.S. stats, 15.1% had a major depressive episode, and 36.7 had persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness, which is one major criteria to diagnose depression. For Olentangie, 43% of our students in 2019 reported feeling sad or helpless for two weeks, which again is an indicator of depression. Again, U.S. data, 18.8% seriously considered attempting suicide in 2019, and in Olentangie, 20% of our students seriously considered attempting suicide. And U.S. data, 15.7% made a suicide plan, and then 8.9% actually attempted suicide. And in Olentangie, that number was 7%. So you can see our numbers are matching the national statistics pretty closely. And then 2.5% made a suicide attempt requiring medical treatment. And in Olentangie, that was 2%. 2% doesn't sound like a lot, but that's over 400 students that we could have lost in 2019. And both nationally and in Olentangie, that's just middle school and high school, so that doesn't include any stats on any of our elementary students as well. So just to show you kind of the effects that COVID have had on mental health, this is a chart separated from boys and girls of weekly emergency room visits for suspected suicide attempts. So for boys, you can actually see that 2020 was the worst year for them, and it did kind of decrease there in 2021. And they only have data for right now through mid-2021. But if you look at girls, 2021 is much, much higher. I do also want to point out for the boys chart, that actually only goes up to, number of weekly ED visits only goes up to 300, whereas the girls, it goes up to 1,200. So that's a significant difference. If we were to actually overlay those two charts and have them be separated, there'd be a big gap in between the boys and girls ER visits for suicide attempts. So this is why protective factors are so important. We have to make sure we're building those indicators for positive mental health, because if they're present in most children, it's going to lead to better outcomes. Even if they do struggle with some symptoms of mental health, they're less likely to develop a full disorder. So again, I'm not going to read over all of these, but I did want to point out, a lot of the positive indicators were aspects that we have in our portrait of a learner: curiosity, positivity, resilience, persistence, things like that. So again, the things that we're building up in our portrait of our learner are really those positive indicators for mental health. Other protective factors that we want to make sure we're building up in our students are academic achievement and intellectual development, which we do very well at, obviously. We want to help teach them emotional regulation, because if you can't regulate your emotions, then you can't really understand how you're feeling and get yourself to a place of calm. Good coping skills and problem-solving skills, engagement and connections in two or more of the following contexts: school, with peers, athletics, employment, religion, or culture. Presence of mentors and support for development of skills and interests. This is why our teachers and staff in school are so important, to become mentors and have those positive relationships with our students. And then physical and psychological safety. So again, that feeling safe and supported, and school is a comfortable place for them to be. So just to show you, again, this is U.S. data where students are accessing mental health services. Obviously, a specialty mental health setting, such as a community mental health agency, is the most common place where mental health services are being provided. But then second to that is in the educational setting. There's a lot of barriers that we can take away by providing those services in school. Kids don't have to miss as much school, because their parents don't have to pick them up, drive them to their appointment, have their appointment, drive them back. It can be during the school day, so we don't have to worry about evening appointments and are there people with evening appointments available and things like that. So that educational setting is the second most likely place where students are accessing mental health services. So what can we do in schools? The U.S. Surgeon General put out an advisory for protecting youth mental health in 2021, and it specifically spoke to things that schools can be doing to support students' mental health. One being create positive, safe, and affirming school environments. Again, making sure our students feel like they belong and they feel safe when they come to school. Expanding social-emotional learning programs and other evidence-based approaches that promote healthy development. Learn how to recognize signs of changes in mental health and physical health among students, including trauma and behavioral changes, and making sure that when we see that, our staff, meaning teachers, custodians, food service, whomever it might be, knows what to do, can recognize that in a student, and be able to get them to the help that they need. Provide a continuum of supports to meet students' mental health needs, including evidence-based prevention practices and trauma-informed mental health care. Expand school-based mental health workforce and support the mental health of all school personnel. So again, making sure that our teachers are healthy as well, because they can't take care of our kids if they're also not feeling mentally healthy themselves. So here in Olentangie, we do have a tier model for our services, for mental health services and general student well-being. So that Tier 1, we're looking at universal intervention. So again, every student has access to these things. It doesn't necessarily mean they utilize it on a regular basis, but we have seven school resource officers throughout the district, 27 clinic aide nurses, and 48 school counselors. And then for Tier 2, those are going to be more brief targeted interventions for a smaller group of students, and usually it's through a referral process. We have 13 school social workers, 32 school psychologists, and 11 and 1/2 school nurses. And then for Tier 3, that's going to be for the small, small group of students. Usually, 1% to 5% of students will require Tier 3 services. And for that, we have 12 mental health specialists, split between Centaro for K-8 and OSU for the high schools, and five behavior specialists. So looking at the recommended ratios for these groups of people, all of the top ratios are recommended through each group's national association. So for school counselors, the recommended ratio is 1 to 250. For school social workers, it's 1 to 250 as well for general education, but 1 to 50 for students with intensive needs. So think of a student who might be in a specialized unit for behaviors and things like that. For school psychologists, it's 1 in 500, and school nurses, it's 1 in 750. Looking at Ohio, no one's meeting those recommended ratios. It's really difficult to actually get to that point. You're going to have a lot of staff, especially with us, with how many students we have, right? So for school counselors in Ohio, it's at about 1 in 484. School social workers is 1 for every 4,854 students. School psychologist is 1 for every 1,084 students, and school nurses is 1 for 1,048 students. So I took data from last year, because we're still early in the school year. I didn't want to give premature data for how many students were supporting this school year. So looking at last year, our current number is 23,243, but we've been able to support all tier levels at every building. So we have Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3 available at every school here in the district. For nursing services, we have 234 students who are on individualized health plans, meaning they have some kind of health condition that requires some kind of special attention. We have 110 students who are on medical 504s, so again, that medical condition requires some sort of accommodations. 369 food allergy action plans, 225 asthma action plans, and 90 seizure action plans. About 100 students or so received behavior support services. That can look anywhere from, again, an individual student needing that support, or sometimes even doing classroom interventions. If maybe a classroom has several students who are struggling, then the behavior specialist might go in and work on kind of a more classroom level, and helping all those students find more regulation and things like that. For school social workers, they supported about 800 students. Centaro supported 610 students at the elementary level, 358 middle school, 185. We also have a Centaro clinician at Oasis who serviced 42 students. And then we do have access to a crisis clinician at the Centaro office, and they helped with some high school students, and that was, the number was 25. For OSU, they service 286 high school students. And then we also, I actually forgot to update my number, because I just got a new one. We actually had 15 referrals to the OSU psychiatric nurse practitioner. That was something we added in last year. We know access to a psychiatrist is very difficult, specifically adolescent psychiatrists for medication management. And so with our contract with OSU, we're able to, again, with parent permission and consent, ask the parent, "Do you want to have access to this?" We have appointments available and can take away that waitlist for students. They still do have to go to Harding and fill out all the paperwork and do that, but we at least can get them seen a lot quicker than some of the other psychiatry offices. So for staff support, we have a few different things going on. We have our employee assistance program that's through the Mutual of Omaha. Centaro has a county-funded program called Backing Our Frontline that's available to all frontline workers, including teachers and school staff, where they can get four to six free sessions. We are trialing the OSU BEST program, which is a peer support model for staff, in which we'll have about 20 to 25 staff at Liberty High School get trained in this BEST peer support model for mental health first aid, basically, and then they will be identified to other staff members. So if a staff member's struggling, they know that they can go to one of the best-trained staff to get that support. We do have staff who will come to the school social worker or the mental health specialist in the building and do consultation, even for themselves or a family member. And then we do go out in the buildings and do presentations on self-care and support for our staff. So we do want to make sure we're providing balanced support. So not only are we supporting the students, but we're also supporting our staff and our parents through training and education. So we've been rolling out trauma-informed care across the district, so that all of our staff understand what trauma is and why it's important to take a trauma-informed care approach. Mental health first aid, so again, everybody has those basic skills to be able to recognize and then get students or staff to the support that they need. Cognito is a suicide prevention interactive module that all staff have access to, that they can do an elementary, middle school, or high school student, where they actually walk through and get corrective feedback on why they should or shouldn't have said a certain thing to a student once they get that information. We use the social-emotional learning standards through ODE. We are looking at both prevention and intervention. We have active minds clubs at all of our high schools, which is a student-led club focused on reducing stigma and starting the conversation about mental health. We have our parent academy that tries to house all of the different parent events and education that we're doing throughout the district. So just because a parent might not have a student in special education, they can still be aware and know of the self-regulation course that the behavior specialists are providing through special ed, but they might have a student who's not special ed but thinks that that would be a beneficial course for them to learn about for their student. And then last year, we partnered with Neighborhood Bridges, which is a community agency in which our, it links our community members who want to donate items to our community members who need those items. It took a big load off of our social workers, so they didn't have to send lots of emails, "Hey, does anybody have an extra coat to give a student? Does anybody have any extra boots?" So we're able to, through our Neighborhood Bridges website, submit a need for a family, and those needs get picked up very quickly. So anything from, again, basic needs of, you know, snacks for the clinic or leggings for the clinic. We've had to ask for a lot of leggings for the clinic. Or, you know, school supplies, even furniture, so couches, washing machines, bedroom furniture. We had a family who needed basically a whole apartment furnished, and again, people were able to donate that, and the Neighborhood Bridges also facilitates then the moving of all of that. So again, we don't have to borrow our Olentangie vans to then go have the social workers haul a washing machine up some flight of stairs. So that's been a very, very beneficial partnership. And then to Mr. Lester's point, we did have our first well-being committee last night. I made a general kind of purpose of the meeting, and then through the next couple meetings, we'll really refine what this purpose statement is going to be. But ultimately, we want to facilitate maximum learning for every student by supporting student well-being and mental health. And again, we collected many, many ideas of areas of interest and things that people might want to explore. We're going to compile those into a list, which we have a lot, and then we're going to send those out to the committee members, so that we can kind of find at least a few for an area of focus to start with. And then again, as we kind of work through that, come up with different ideas as we meet the needs of each one. So looking ahead, we want to continue to support students with the transition back to normalcy. This is kind of our first year that our students haven't had some kind of disruption with, we had masks at the beginning of last year, so this was the first kind of normal year so far. We're going to be moving ahead with our ad hoc board committee recommendations throughout the year. We're continuing to review and refine our social-emotional learning prevention programs. We want to look at student well-being and mental health staffing, our parent presentations that we're giving, and more staff professional development. Any questions that you have for me?
Any questions for Dr. Berens?
So I've got a comment, first of all. So our student well-being team is Dr. Berens and Dr. Branson, two people who are doing yeoman's work in this area. And you can see the enormity of the task that's ahead. And I've heard from so many people as we're going through this, just about how concerned they are about, you know, where we are just as a country, where we are as a state, where we are as a school district, on dealing with mental health issues and how important it is. So first of all, thank you, and thank you to Dr. Branson and everybody else that's putting in all of this work. The numbers and the statistics and things that you shared should scare all of us, right? It should scare all of us about what we are facing and the enormity of this task. What we talked about a little bit last night, and what I want to reinforce here, is that we are on a team. We are all on a team here, right? Parents, students, teachers, and the board, and everybody. This is something that we have to work on together. And it highlights just how important it is that we work collaboratively, and that we listen to any idea that comes through and really try to make the best of it. So as we continue to refine this, we're going to be talking about both responsive things, like, you know, how we're staffing appropriately for social workers and how we're doing all of this sort of stuff. But we also want to think about proactive strategies. How we can continue to build up the ways that we, as a district, are supporting our students, and we put those things into place, so that those senses of belonging and other stuff help to insulate about, from the crises that we're going to face, right? And that's where we don't want to be at. We have, you know, we have a lot of good resources that are available there, but if we can stop from ever getting there, all the better. So thank you deeply for all the work, and for everybody who's here and everybody who's listening. We are all going to be depending on you to help support us in this and to help try to make, you know, the conditions better for our students, for our families, for our community. So I hope we'll have your support, and we're doing that. We're excited about the work that we're doing and look forward to that as we're moving forward.
Anything else?
If I may. Dr. Berens, thank you for this presentation, and I appreciate all the hard work that you put in, your care and concern for our students every day. You showed a recommended ratios slide, followed with the Ohio ratios. I don't want to put you on the spot if you don't have these numbers readily available, but, and if not, just in the future, I would like to get my hands on these. I see the Ohio ratios. I'm very interested in the Olentangie ratios and where we fall.
Yes, and I, yeah, I can't do math that quickly.
Well, again, for a school guidance counselor's standpoint, we have contractual language that we have an integral multiple of 450 at the elementary. So we have, since we don't have an elementary school that's 900 students, every elementary has one counselor. High school and middle school ratios are 350 students per counselor. So 350 kids would get one counselor, 700 kids, two, and so on. So high schools all have five counselors currently, and the middle schools have two or three.
Two high schools have four, two high schools have five.
What she said.
That works. Yeah, our social worker ratio is better than it was. We doubled our team for this year, which has helped tremendously. I mean, even in just the first few weeks of school, especially that full-time social worker at the high school, the counselors are just like, "Thank you so much. We're able to just do so much more because we have somebody who's here." So if we have a student in our office, I can take them right to that social worker office and get the support that they need versus, "Oh, sorry, she's not here today because she's at her other building." So that's been helpful. School nurses, we're also pretty close to the recommended ratio as well, and I think psychologists, too. So the ones where we're a little off would be the counselors, which is in the contractual language, and then the social workers.
Thank you.
I have a question. Was that graph, the one that you showed with the visits for, excuse me, suspected suicide attempts, that was national?
That was national, yes.
Can Delaware Public Health or whoever the government, can they give us local data?
Potentially. I can reach out to my contacts at the Health Department and see if they're, they would probably be able to maybe give us just Grady's numbers. I don't know if they'd be able to have access to other hospitals that aren't in Delaware County. I can also find out, the Delaware Suicide Prevention Coalition might have some stats for Delaware County as well.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, the next item is Item B, the transportation update. Lori Carter Evans, welcome.
Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here to meet everyone in person and congratulate those board members who are in new roles and welcome new board members. So congratulations and welcome. I'm Lori Carter Evans, Director of Transportation, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the Department of Transportation, which is my passion. So I'm especially proud of the commitment to students that the men and women in the Department of Transportation have. The work that they do is so vital to our schools and our students. Most everyone knows that across the nation, transportation operations are facing monumental challenges. And it takes a special person to drive a school bus and meet the needs of students, passengers, at the same time that they're driving. And sometimes, of course, the job may be a short-term job or a temporary career, as there are many competing jobs out there. So, and this is not to paint a bleak picture, because the Department of Transportation here at Olentangie has faced challenges before. And through creative thinking of staff and drivers and our efficiencies that we build in, and their commitment in pulling together to do what it takes, has put us in a better position than, better position than most. So we're a cross-functional team. We have many talents that we can tap into, and of course, I'm not saying that we're at our optimal level, but we have the potential to do so, and we're moving forward in that direction. So when we started off our summer, our summer kickoff, we were excited. All the drivers were excited to come back, and our theme was get reset and get ready to go. So we're excited to do that. And so this evening, I'm going to talk about, I'm going to briefly give you a department overview, talk about actions to address vacancies and absences, routing and ridership, going to touch on that, and talk about a couple of initiatives that we have, and creating, how we're creating conditions of support, and that's related to how we're retaining our current drivers. So, of course, most people identify the Department of Transportation with our yellow school buses traveling around the district. So more than 180 Olentangie drivers, substitutes, office staff, they do a phenomenal job caring for and delivering our students. And they've kept us going during the pandemic and as we come out of the pandemic. When we look at last year, although there were many struggles and there was a major shortage, we managed to remain open, so and continue transporting our students. So there may have been delays, but we did not shut down or have another type of adverse situation upon the district. So we're proud of that, and we continue to keep things rolling, as a lot of people like to say, for transportation. So, and a few people, as I talk about dispatching, few people get the opportunity to hear our dispatchers. They're our link between our drivers, our schools, and our staff. Our dispatchers, like last year, we were down a dispatcher, and we have a new dispatcher this year, and she's hit the ground running. So the drivers depend immensely on our dispatcher, and we do, too. And I'll get into more about our radio system later. That's one of our new initiatives, but our dispatcher is also a vital member of the transportation team. So our routing and trips. Routing is more of the behind-the-scenes work. Keeps, the routing person keeps our map updated, designs the routes for the drivers, sets the bus stops, reviews requests for changes in bus stops, and just makes sure that everybody knows where they're going. Also, if we do have to change routes, split routes, do something else... the routing and our trips person, people, they do the job, they do a wonderful job doing that. So, and even this year, we have a new program, an after-school program at the Delaware Area Career Center. Typically, we're finished with our routing and by, with our buses that are out on the road by about, a little before 5:00. But this program actually starts at the end of high school, at the end of the high school dismissal, and then it ends at 5:00 o'clock. So our buses are starting to pick up at the Delaware Area Career Center at 5:00. So our creative routing has helped us to make that a seamless process. So in trips, you know, as you know, they're set up to enhance students' curriculum and support our athletics. And we run actually more than 3,500 trips a year, so, and that's always climbing. So by working closely, I'm sorry. Our next item I wanted to talk about is our budget. So I have the budget listed here because we don't typically talk about our budget, but it's important that we focus on our fiscal responsibility. And transportation has always been focused on fiscal responsibility. However, the increases in the cost of parts, the escalating diesel fuel prices have impacted us. So at the end of last school year, we paid $5.41 a gallon for diesel, compared to the year before at $2.34 per gallon. So fortunately, that's coming down a little bit at $4.12, but we're not where we were. So there's another item I wanted to point out. You may know about House Bill 110, that there was an unfunded mandate that increased the payment and lieu of transportation, which is for impractical transportation, from 250 to 538.55. So that nearly doubled, over, more than double what we had to pay. So we've worked closely with our Treasurers Office, and we're able to make accounting adjustments and meet our financial obligations. So thank you, Emily. So hiring and training. We're still attracting drivers and have a steady flow of applicants. So we're glad to say that, that they're attracted to come to Olin Tangi schools, and we want to continue that, you know, attracting them. So although we have a shortage, we're still selective though, because we're not only looking for great driving skills, but we're looking for people who not only represent the Department of Transportation, but represent Olin Tangi as a whole. So, and I'll talk a little bit more about recruiting and staffing as we get on through the presentation. But I want to also point out fleet maintenance. We have a great team of mechanics and a fleet foreman, and they've consistently kept our buses on the road. So I just want to give a shout out to them because they do a great job. And not only do they maintain our bus fleet, they also maintain our CMF vehicles and our vans, and they do a wonderful job. So I will move on to our actions to address vacancies and absences. So we look at our route coverage, we look at our communication with parents, and our recruitment and retention. So for route coverage, that's where we have to get creative. Because, you know, we have vacancies, there are some absences. So our route coverage is where we need to really shine and have people that really know what they're doing, and we all pitch in to do that. So schools have their regular schedules, but built into those schedules are different tiers, as you know. And those are designed for bus travel times. And in some cases this year, we've included extra time in those routes. So when we routed over the summer, we kept that in mind of what happened last year. And we thought, well, let's make sure that the drivers are already compensated for that extra time. And if a route usually takes maybe 30 minutes, we'll give 45 minutes. That way, it's like a built-in substitute almost. So if we did have another route that we needed to split, then that driver is still available and can take on some extra students with minimal impact. So we also have most of our staff who have commercial driver's licenses. And so they readily, maybe right now, readily pitch in. So after a while, you know, they may not readily pitch in, or they'll pitch in, but not readily. But, so, but we have our office staff that have CDLs, and that helps us immensely. So, and although most, more of a last resort, like I mentioned, we do split routes. And that means we distribute a section of a route to another driver, and that's when the drivers pitch in. Sometimes that does cause delays, but that is why it is a last resort. And there are times that we may send a bus back, which we call a double back, and that's also a last resort because of the delay. So for communication, we have increased our communication with parents and drivers. This year, we have a person that's dedicated to send out the instant connect messages if we need to, when there are delays. We have Google Docs, spreadsheets that we share with the schools, so they know when a bus is different. We also send out the instant connects, we copy the schools. And like last year, we sent over 2,000 instant connect messages to parents and to our schools. For recruitment and retention, it's the exciting part, because we've partnered with communications. We have a cross-functional Transportation Directors Advisory Committee. That includes members of the community, members of our staff, drivers, our transportation supervisors. And this is basically to equip the community with knowledge about transportation and equip us with knowledge of the impact we have on our community. So we want to partner with our parents and community leaders. So on the next slides, I'm going to show you some pictures of some of our activities that we have that support our drivers. And then lastly, I'm going to share with you how we made a student's day. It was his, like his senior wish, and I'll talk about that when I show you the picture. Well, those conditions of support I'll go through. So you're going to see some pictures from the rodeo, appreciation day, end of the year celebration, and how we made a student's day at the end of the year. So for our rodeo, as you saw in the video, Kevin Ball, who's the state champion, regional school bus rodeo, he's always winning the regional rodeo, so he placed in the top five. Stephanie Bennett, she works in the office, actually, she is one of the routing secretaries, and she was the Rookie of the Year, so, and she also placed in the top five. She's also our Transportation Employee of the Year. So we're proud of these two for continuously representing Olin Tangi at the rodeo. And then our appreciation day, every day, every year in May, we do something different. It's either cooking breakfast or providing lunch and just celebrating our drivers and letting everyone in the district know that we are appreciating our drivers. And then we had a Hawaiian luau at Orange Park, where we had drivers bring their family members, office staff brought their family members, so it was a family event, and everybody was very happy with that, so. And here's where we made a student's day. His wish was to drive his driver, or at least not drive her, but sit in the, behind the wheel. So we invited him to come to the Transportation Center, get in a bus, sit behind the wheel. His driver would sit in his wheelchair, and he would pretend to drive the bus. So this is that event, so we were very, very happy with that, so. And that concludes my presentation, and as I said, we are continuing to move forward. So if you have any questions, I'll take those.
So I think it kind of goes without saying, you know, what a tremendous job you think the Transportation Department does. You know, there's been some very well-publicized challenges in other districts across central Ohio that we have not had to deal with, because of you and your leadership team and the drivers really doing a great job. So I think it's fantastic. So my question is, so I was on Lewis Center Road yesterday at a stoplight. Next to me, I see the first Rivian electric truck. Where are we with like e-buses, is that even feasible?
So we've looked at our, the electric vehicles in the past couple of years, and again this year. Because of the infrastructure and some of the costs associated with that, it has not worked in our favor to start to implement that. But as the cost of the batteries needed to run those buses, as that comes down, then it might be something that we're able to embark on. So we're continuously monitoring where the technology is for EV, and we expect that at some point, if it continues to decrease and makes sense for us, that we would pursue that.
In my sense, due to our size, it doesn't make sense for us to be a leader in that space, but we're a fast follower, should it actually become feasible?
Yep, absolutely.
Just out of curiosity, how many miles a gallon do the school buses get?
Oh, about seven, seven miles per gallon. Some of them may get eight, but.
I don't need an in-depth analysis or answer here, but a brief overview, if you can provide one. No experience necessary, training provided. We got a lot of parents here tonight, I put my two very little ones on the bus every day, and we send them off into the world. Can you speak a little bit to the training that is provided to our bus drivers?
Sure, we ask when a new applicant comes onboard if they don't have a CDL, that they need a permit, like your driver's permit if you were just driving a car. So you need a permit for a CDL, and we give them a book or the printout from the BMV to study. Once they get that permit in hand, then we can start their training, which involves an onboard instructor, is what we call them, OBIs. They are our drivers, they are certified OBIs, and they teach them everything from a pre-trip inspection of all the components on the bus. They need to learn those components and check them before they take the bus out on the road. And then they're tested on that before they can get their CDL. And then we teach them different maneuvers in the bus. Actually, that becomes the easier part for a number of people. We go through the pickup, the drop-off, how you operate the lights, and a number of things. And it takes approximately, I would say, between four and six weeks. If somebody is continuously, continuously training, then they should get that completed pretty quickly.
One follow-up question to that, too. The gentleman who's been driving a bus for over 20 years, and I believe he said he's driving a bus for special needs students, is there additional training then put in place for anyone who's going to be driving a bus?
So actually, the drivers receive training in all aspects. So you, when drivers come out of training, they're ready to drive a Lyft bus or a regular bus. And when we train them in the summer, and we go over all of the skills during the in-service, we make sure that they get all of that training as well, whether they have students who have special needs or they don't.
Thank you.
I was pointing to you first.
Instant connect, do parents need to sign up for that, or is that an automatic?
So that's our, that's automatic. We set that up internally, based on students that are in Power School, so it's actually through Power School. So if students are already registered and they're using Power School, that will go, it's set up by bus. So every year, that IT and communications and transportation, we work together to make sure that the bus information is correct. So we can take bus 42 for Orange, if it's at Orange, and send out a notice that says your bus will be delayed by 10 minutes.
Yeah, just a quick, I think you kind of answered it with Dr. Wallach's question, but first, thank you for picking up my son every day and getting him to school safely.
Thank you for sending him on the bus.
It's a big deal, because, you know, we talk about big stuff, but really, we're talking about our kids, and sometimes scary things happen, and it's never been. You have a better success rate than I do of getting him to school on time. So it's greatly appreciated, and I only have to go four minutes. So thank you for what you do. It is appreciated, and it's probably very rarely noticed, and you only hear about the problems, and where's my bus? I was thrilled the first week of school, getting updates, the last bus is back. And every day, we're shaving minutes off the, and it's really impressive, so thank you. You are appreciated. Just to clarify, our transportation professionals are getting updated training through the school year. So if teachers are doing continuing ed, our drivers are doing continuing ed, is that how it works?
So when we have professional development for the school district, we also have professional development for our drivers. So yes, we have training, four dates in the year that we have training for our drivers. And we also have post-accident training, if something happens, if other, you know, other things that we give targeted training as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Last one is actually maybe more for Emily, but to go, have we ever explored hedging our fuel costs?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Hedging the fuel costs?
No, we haven't really explored that. I think, gosh, within the last two years, the fuel costs have really jumped to the point where it might be beneficial. But it is part of a program that I believe it's RFP, if that's the right term that I'm using, where you talk to different vendors about, can we get a cheaper price, can we get it, you know, in bulk, things like that.
Or join with other school districts as well, to get a bulk price, so.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for your kind comments, and I appreciate you guys as well.
Next up is Todd Meyer, Chief Operations Officer, give us a staffing update.
Okay, good evening, thank you for having me and allowing me to present a staffing update. Before I get started, so one thing that I often say to our administrators, one of the most important decisions we make as an administrator is who we select to bring through the doors to work with our children, and I honestly believe that. So one of the best decisions I ever made was selecting Lori as our transportation director. How long has it been now, six years?
It'll be five in February.
Five, five in February, but honestly, Ms. Carter Evans is probably one of the best transportation directors in the industry. She does an amazing job, she's always upbeat, and she's always there to solve problems and work out solutions. And again, you guys had said it, but looking back at last year, just amazing with the challenges that all school districts were faced with, that we got through the school year, and especially with the size of our school district, so unbelievable. Okay, so staffing update, okay. So I wanted to first start here, and I probably, once or twice a week throughout the summer, received some kind of news feed about the teacher shortage, educator shortages across the country and in the state. So I definitely wanted to highlight that. So teacher shortages in the United States, and really, in reading a lot of these articles, it's on average about 300,000 educators are leaving education on a yearly basis. And then coupled with that substantial decrease in the number of students entering education field, so in the last decade, about 35% decrease in the education field. So not only are we losing teachers, but also the pipeline is becoming shorter of teachers or of individuals entering the teaching field. And then, and also in Ohio, there's been a steep decline of about 17,000 in the last few years since 2019. We've had, we have had a reduction in student enrollment, about 2%, but 6% in teachers, so obviously, there's a gap there. And the reason I say that is because, you know, one thing I admire about Olin Tangi, this is a special place. I mean, the fourth-largest district, but we really do a good job as far as being intentional in our planning and being proactive in our recruitment efforts, and obviously, retention efforts. So with that, we started the year 100% with our certified positions filled. We do have about 12 classified vacancies to start the year, but again, with our classified openings, they're dynamic, so it happens all year. And 100% of our teachers in licensed area, I've read articles where, again, school districts will bring adults into the building, but they're teaching out of the licensed area. And this is, again, with the growth that we continue to have as a district. So I went back to 2019, and we've brought in over 400 teachers since 2019 in the district as we continue to grow. And then you, on top of that, add administrators and classified staff, so we're well over 600 since 2019. over 600 since 2019. And again, like I said, that doesn't happen by accident. We do a really good job in our district, I think, is, like I said, as far as being intentional with our planning and recruitment efforts. So I want to start, so last year, we, I always do this resignations and retirements. So administrators, that, we had 9.5% of our administrators resign and 1.5% retire. So I put that equal signs because that was equal to the year before. So we also look at trend data of, of, over the years of our attrition rates. And then the next one is certified resignations, 3.4%. So that was an increase of 3.1% from the previous year, so a little uptick in the resignations. And then the retirements stayed flat, equal at 1%. And I want to highlight that, again, across the country, the turnover rate is about 8 to 16%. So if you say 8, 8% of teachers just leaving the education field and another 8% then leaving their current district to go teach somewhere else. So for us in Owletangie, we're still in good shape with our attrition there. And then also classified is 10.3%, resignations and then retirement, 2.1%. And again, slightly up, less than a percent from the previous year and like 0.1% in the retirements.
Is there, if you were to look at turnover kind of on, on the scale of kind of first year to 30th year, there's got to be like a tipping point, right? Where at some point, based upon where you are on the, on the pay scale, that mobility between districts becomes very challenging.
Yeah, so I would say, like, we're one of the few districts that still, like, for example, when somebody comes here, if they have 20 years, we give them 10 years. A lot of districts don't, they're, they're much lower than that. So obviously, yeah, when you're getting to five, six, seven years, then it's a little harder to jump.
It's almost like if you did the journey of a teacher, kind of get them through that fifth, sixth year, then you kind of got it.
The research suggests you get them through year five and then obviously coupled with a lot of other things you do within a district, the retention rates improve. So recruiting and hiring, again, I, I talked about our intentionality here. Number one starts with our brand identity. We do a phenomenal job of promoting Owletangie schools really across the state and across the country. And, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say this because on a daily basis with the number of buildings that we have, so many good things happen in this district underneath the roofs and between the walls of our schools, it's unbelievable. This is, this is truly a special place. And I wanted to highlight, even with the data that I just showed as far as people leaving the education professing, profession, we've had in the last year a 15% increase in active applicants. So we went from 4,000 to 4,700. And again, I'm going to attribute that, attribute that to strong brand identity and our recruitment and retention efforts, which starts with, we typically attend over 20, 20-plus job fairs outside of Owletangie. And from our perspective, we do need to cast a wider net. We're trying to attract the best talent out there across the country. So that's a strategy that we use, attending, and last year we attended 29 outside certified career fairs, and most of them were back face-to-face. The year before, we, we were virtual through the pandemic. You know, one thing that's really good here at Owletangie and, and we do this year after year is our certified interview day. So on that day, and you can see a picture, we set up tables in one of the high school gyms, and it was at Liberty High School last year, interviewed over 175 applicants. And that really helps us to build sort of our, we call a candidate list pool that we then give to all of our principals so they can use that list as their screening applicants. And then last year, for the first time ever, we did a specific first annual intervention specialist interview day. And the reason that's important is because we've started seeing the trend over the year. The highest percentage of licensed teachers that we've hired have been in intervention here at Owletangie. And, and it's not just Owletangie, it's, it's across the state and really across the country. So we interviewed on that day 74 intervention specialists and, and we did this back in, we, I think it was Jan, or February, we started way early. That's another good thing, again, going back to planning in Owletangie, we start early with our recruiting efforts and interviewing because we continue to grow and we anticipate our openings. But from that day, we interviewed 74 and then hired, ended up hiring 16 from that day. And so just to put things into perspective, last year we hired 31, 25 intervention specialists and six ELL teachers, which is 28% of who we hired last year. And the year before it was 26%. So again, that was the first year we did it. We had some, for sure, success and learned some things, so we're definitely going to go back to that. And then nine classified career fairs and we increased career fairs classified because again, like I said, that's, we're hiring all year classified, so we just really have to stay on that. So we increased our efforts with career fairs and across all of our social media platforms as far as recruitment. So just down there, and I, and I want to emphasize this too, because a lot of times you'll interview in Owletangie and you don't get a job the first time and maybe not even the second year, but then the third time, yes. So we really rely on our certifi, our substitute pool. And so you can see, 25% of our new hires last year came from our substitute pool. And then again, 59% came from our certified a candidate list. And again, that list is generated from all of our career fairs and interview days that we have. 13% new hires Owletangie graduates, and that's always a, a good stat that I present to the, to the board because not only do we have a teacher academy here in the district, which promotes teaching, but we have a lot of our graduates who do go into teaching and, and come back and want to teach in Owletangie. And down there at the bottom and, and from leading the HR department, this is, this stat's really good because again, we're in our, we attract and then in our onboarding, we're really intentional when we bring staff in because Owletangie's so big. So we do a really good job of making Owletangie feel small from the get-go. And it's extremely important for not only attracting, but retaining our staff. So we really work collaboratively with the curriculum department, the technology department, and then HR department. And then we went, I think it was three years ago now to elect digital onboarding, so we collect that data back on that experience because really, when we select and hire that person, that employee experience starts right then. And we want that experience to be positive and as, obviously as they continue through their journey here, we want to provide a, a positive experience for our staff. So that we, we collect that data on our onboarding and you can see 97% satisfaction rate, but then we do many orientations throughout the summer, and I think we did six or seven this year. So we bring smaller groups in, like groups of 30 or less, and we give them their computer, get their ID badge, and we answer a lot of questions and go over for sure their technology. Because when you come in new to the district, you're a little anxious. First of all, they're always extremely excited because they were selected to work in Owletangie. But as you can imagine, there's a lot of anxiety coming in to Owletangie because we're Owletangie and, you know, we have high expectations and there's, it's just so big. So again, trying to make it feel small, the technology in itself is daunting of all of the things that teachers have to have access to with technology. So we do a really good job of going over that and then obviously the expectations from the HR side with making sure that their paperwork and onboarding and obviously that experience is gone over before they get started. And then they, we have the new teacher network where we really immerse them in the Owletangie culture.
Just a quick question, on the graduates, have we tracked that number over time and sort of see is it going up, especially with the teacher academy and things like that? You know, how is that trending?
I, I would say that's probably consistent. I, I don't know exactly for sure, but we're, we consistently hire Owletangie graduates at 13%. I was, if, if I could, if I remember over the last few years, it's probably like 9% to 15%. And then I'm, I'm, just real quick, again, going back to, you know, one thing that I admire about Owletangie is when we forecast, when we, we forecast our staffing and then we, we work with our growth and then we almost to the position have that in our forecast and then obviously we work backwards from there, working through posting our jobs and then filling them. And then at the end of the day, our goal is to have, we have a June 1st, a July 1st, and then that first board meeting in August deadline for certified staff of 100%. And, and since I've been here, we've, we've been able to reach that. So new staff members employed, so again, busy season. I, I say that every year, I said, you know, as far as a busy hiring season, but in Owletangie, it's always a busy hiring season. We hired 27 administrators, 111 teachers, 87 classified staff. And, and this is a really good stat underneath here because we looked at the data and our student population continues to increase diversity-wise this year, or as of today, it's a little over 34% student population diverse. So it, it is extremely important for us to attract top diverse talent in the district. So this year of the administrators, 22.2% diverse and then certified, 12.6% and then classified, 14.9%. And all of those percentages are higher than last year. Administratively, plus 9.2, certified, plus 3.1, and then plus 1.1 classified. So again, those efforts that we employ out there as far as trying to recruit diverse applicants to Owletangie, you know, from my perspective, the last couple of years have been paying off. And I know that, and I, right there at the bottom, this is extremely important because when we talk about talent management and providing opportunities for our staff, 14 of our administrators were promoted from within. And that's something that Mr. Rafe has been, is for sure a goal of his ever since he became the superintendent. We identify talent, we help develop, we help grow them, and obviously we're able to promote them within the district. And then again, there's, there are the percentages of, from our a candidate list of who we hired new this year. One metric that we always use, again, this isn't our budget, so we look at overall staff and then we always, our budget metric is a master step three, so this year it's 57,165. So we really try our hardest when we're going through hiring all of these certified staff members to stay within the budget. So again, this year we were just a little bit under our metric and to put that into perspective, so if you multiply that by the number of teachers that we hired, it pretty much saves us one FTE. It's about $76,000 because if you take the master step three and then add benefits to it, it saves about one FTE. So that's, we, we, again, going through the recruiting and working through with all of our administrators, we try to, our hardest to stay within that. So staffing total, so at the end of the day, this is Owletangie. 146 administrators, 1,563 certified staff, 904 classified, our ESC I put in there too because they're part of Owletangie's, 245 ESC staff members in the district for a total now over 2,800, which again, one of the largest employers for sure in Delaware County and in the region. I want to highlight the certified substitutes because that 1,137 as of today is a 45% increase from last year. We were at 630 last year. That's huge for us in Owletangie again, because we're so big and we rely on our substitute pool to fill in and provide service in our schools, not only when staff member are out, but because of, we do so much professional development in-house, it's extremely important for us. And then 333 classified subs. I, I started doing this a couple of years ago because again, over time, we want to see how our staff's maturing, experience-wise. So again, we're, I think it's 74% of our staff, if I added it, 77, 77% are within, you know, one to 20 years still. So some may say that's fairly young, but you know, we're, we're starting to move over those bands for sure. And then our total average years in the district, 14.5. Then lastly, we don't do this every year, but in Owletangie, we are known to open a few schools here and there, new school buildings. So we are fortunate, again, that the, our community and our voters passed the bond issue to Build Berlin Middle School, so the Berlin Bruins. As you know, Berlin Middle School opened in the fall of '23. So again, as part of our, our process, we're very intentional on staffing that building because not only does it have implications staffing Berlin Middle School, but also there's ripple effects throughout the district based on who gets selected to go there and transfers. So as you know, we are, we've already hired the principal and then we're going to post here right around the corner in October, our intern, we're going to start our internal process with internal applicants applying for and being interviewed and selected to go to Berlin. And then what we'll do is we'll post our external certified positions in January, so right after the first of the year. And then we'll finish up with our classified positions in April. And then if, if we have to go any external, which we will, May of '23, just to make sure that we're fully staffed when school opens in August.
What's the total bump when we get a new middle school, if total new positions needed to support that?
So I'm, I'm trying to think like, I want to say we're going to be 50 to 60 because we're probably, enrollment's probably going to be 700 to 800 at the new middle school? Yeah.
Questions, Mr. Meyer?
Not a question, but a quick comment. I have seen the certified interview day firsthand and I mean, it's kind of got this suss, be dating vibe to it. It's, it's incredibly efficient, it is such a well-oiled machine and I just think it's a, it's a tremendous use of our resources and, and a great way to vet that giant candidate pool.
Yes.
So that you create that short list that's, you know, otherwise, yet, you derive the benefit of the, of the collective eyes and, and ears on, on everybody, you know, getting a sense of who's, you know, the skillset that everyone brings, opposed to what one administrator would be capable of doing for that one position in their building. So I just say kudos, it's a, it's a very innovative approach to interviewing.
And kudos to my team in the office because they do a tremendous job of organizing, getting all of the candidates there. And really, we screen from my office, all of those candidates, and we'll get some referrals, but for the most part, it's screening in my office to identify from applications who we think are some top qualified candidates and it's like, it's seamless, it's amazing. So the team does a great job.
Yeah, that, I was 21 before I first had a teacher that didn't look like me. And it was late, Dr. Frank Henderson from Ohio University, he's one of the early graduates of Little Rock in Arkansas. And he was also the first teacher in my life that said I wasn't working hard enough. And he was right. I mean, I was working not hard enough before him, but he was the only one that cared enough to say it. It's important for our kids, 30%, you said, I think.
30, 34%.
Yeah, to see other people, diverse candidates, teaching them, how, what else can we do? And maybe this is just kind of rhetorical because I know you're doing things and I'm, I'm also thinking about it in the context of OEF with, with their efforts, how is that aligned? And I know it's a long meeting, but this is really important because I don't want my son to go 21 years before he has a teacher that looks different than him. It, it's, it's important.
Yeah, so you know, I think first and foremost, probably the best strategy that we've used in the past has been referral program. So we continue to promote referral from internal staff or community members who can refer teachers of color who may be interested in coming to Owletangie. Our, again, the net that we cast, the Y, so for example, I, on the one slide, and I'll go back to it, HBCU is important as far as us continuing to develop. go back to it, HBCU is important as far as us continuing to develop our relationship with those colleges. But one thing, and I want to highlight this, is this year, we do one time a year an ad in the HBCU Career Magazine and it comes out, I believe, in November. So because we're in that magazine, then we're also on the HBCU dashboard. So then every posting that we have will go to that dashboard, so it'll post now next, starting next year across their network. And then we can see exactly, because we have access, we have an account, so we can see exactly who applies now. So we can contact them individually. So that, I think that's going to be good for us. So we, in our travels outside, we always try to attend HBCU events too. So this past year, we did three. West Virginia State, Central State, no, four actually. The Southwest Ohio Northern Kentucky Education Fair, that's an HBCU event. And then Noted, which is Northeast Ohio, was hosted this year at the University of Akron, but also they invite HBCU schools to that job fair. So we really try to look at the job fairs over the course of yearly to see where we can identify some that we can go to. So you know, that's another strategy that we use. So you know, like I said, I think the most, where we've been able to yield, I think the best is from our referral, our diversity referral program.
Is that with the OEF? Is that?
Nope, that's through Olentangie, through our diversity committee here and then through our schools, I'm sorry, through our schools.
How does the OEF efforts fit within this?
Do you want to speak for the OEF?
And I'm, I mean, I'm going to the meetings too and I don't know the answer, so it's as much a gotcha for me, it is maybe for.
So this is Mrs. Freese, director, and she's worked with that group. So do you want to speak to that?
Sure. Well, I would definitely say welcome. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for that. But I would say this is a grassroots effort to speak to exactly what we're talking about. And so that is being built as we speak from the ground up in terms of exactly what that's going to look like. And right now, we're looking at some articulation agreements, we're looking at a mentorship program, we're looking at, quite honestly, all facets in terms of what can we do to target students much earlier? And really, that's the heart of this and to stay with them throughout their experiences so that we can then bring them to the fairs to say they're well-prepared at that point. So I'm working with them more from a mentorship, if you will, and the experiences that they'll need to be successful at the end of that journey. But it really is going to be targeting students as quickly as we can and staying with them. So it's going to be closely tied to the mentorship, which you're aware of throughout that. How do we first identify the individuals? How do we attract them to Olentangie? And what type of mentorship do we have that stays with them so that they want to stay with us? We can't lose them throughout that journey. I think that's one thing that our office has done an excellent job of, quite honestly, is to be able to target and to be able to identify, do you really want to be here? What skills do you need to be successful at the end of your journey? And then also talking about options. Some of them we just don't know. They might think they were looking at a field in education, but it might be in the Treasures Department as an accountant. So I think the unknown is important for us to be able to mentor and to provide experiences for people who will stay with them. So I would say grassroots, there hasn't been a whole lot since this is going to be the first year in inception, but I do foresee the mentoring is going to be the key component and identifying a mentor with each potential student.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, next up is the superintendent's report, Mr. Rafe.
All righty. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Mr. Meyer, great job as usual. I don't know who won the behind-the-scenes pool on how long it's going to take you, but when you did, I think you might have beat the time, but that's, that's great. And Lori and Dr. Behrens, thank you as well for your presentations, are very informative and I'm always proud and impressed when our staff has an opportunity to talk about the great work that they're doing. So I want to start with, live in the mission slide as always, highlight one of our graduates. As you all know, I have a certain affinity for people in the armed services, having three of my four children as Army officers. Drew Rao, who by some accounts, Mr. Smith, may have been someone who frequented your office?
He may.
Enlisted in the, in the U.S. Army as a non-commissioned officer, and he was recently named the Non-Commission Officer of the Year for the Airborne Corps. And so he has certainly shined in his Army career. He's completed a very long list of schools there, basic training, airborne, air assault, Ranger, jump master force, jump master school, and special forces selection. And I know firsthand how difficult it is to get through, not me firsthand, through my son. I would never could have graduated from those schools, but just want to congratulate Sergeant Rao on his huge accomplishments of the last five years. He was the, again, the Army, U.S. Army Command Non-Commission Officer of the Year for the Armies. He's going to be Command Sergeant Major someday. This past few weeks, we welcomed parents all throughout the district to our curriculum nights. They typically cover the structure of the class and other important information. So we always like to have tremendous attendance. It's, always reminds me that we never have enough parking at our schools when we have these types of events, but I'm just so honored and impressed that all the people show up for the curriculum nights. Want to give a shout out to Sanvi and Jaharish, I practice it like seven times, Jay Harshita, who were selected to a very exclusive group of students and had the honor to attend the University, Ohio State University's Medical Camp this summer. They spent three weeks shadowing doctors at OSU and just another shining example of great work by our students. So those two are, I'm sure, getting a head start on their future medical careers. Want to inform the board and the community that as we've requested, as you requested, we're beginning the process of updating the bios of all of our administrators on our district website. So thanks to the communications team for getting that started with our high school, I mean, with all of our principals. We're working on the directors, district leadership bios, and all the assistant principals. So once those are up and running, you'll get a little better opportunity to get to know all of our administrators and their extensive backgrounds. We are getting ready to release, the state has released preliminary data on the 2021-22 state report card. The state report card has been in flux over the last few years and we are going to be releasing, or the state is releasing, a new state report card format. There are five rated components in total. And there are four components for elementary school, since they don't have graduation. There are three components for middle school, since they don't have graduation or early literacy, and then four for high school because they don't have early literacy. So the new rating system will be a five-star system. Achievement is directly related to the passage rates and the level of passing on all of the Ohio State tests. A five-star rating means that the building or the district significantly exceeded the state standard. A one-star rating means that their, the district or the building had less than 50% of their students achieved the max score. Progress is that the district, a five-star rating shows that a significant, significant evidence that the district exceeded student growth expectations by a larger magnitude. A three-star rating with regards to progress means that the district met or is meeting the growth, or the building is meeting the growth expectations. And obviously, one would be not meeting the growth expectations. Gap closing is a reduction in, reduction in educational gaps for our students in selected subgroups. So you have to have 15 students in those specified subgroups. There again, a five-star rating means that the district or the school has significantly exceeded state standards. And then all the way down to one star, early literacy, again, five-star rating means that the district is significantly exceeding state standards in early literacy. And then obviously, the same for graduation rate. So Jeanette Kenny will be giving you a more detailed report here when all of the data is released and finalized and presented. But I just wanted to share with you our preliminary data as, because it has five-star ratings all across the board in all the areas for our district. I looked at all the building level data and it looks very, very, very strong across the district. There are 99 total indicators and we had 97 three stars and above, most of which are all fours and fives. So very, very few, very few areas of concern there with our academic data. So I couldn't be more proud of the team, the leadership team, the curriculum team, and obviously, our building administrators, and most importantly, our staff and students and for the work that they've gone to put that in to get those kind of results. So it's looking really good. Kind of one of those things that just makes me smile. One action item to highlight, we have a new salt barn going in at Liberty High School for the West Side, West Side Schools. As you know, we did some transportation construction over there and attempted to kind of move the existing structure, but it was a little bit beaten up from the weather. So that's on the agenda for approval. And there are some important dates coming up. Obviously, we have our first professional development day, which again, is a direct, I think the results you saw on the state report card are a reflection of the PPD work that we do in the district. September 19th, multilingual family night, something put on by our people services team. We have high school alumni homecoming gatherings at Olentangie High School and Orange High School coming up. We're kind of working with the communications team to be more purposeful about those events as we try to build our alumni network. And then our next Board of Education meeting is September 22nd.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Rafe?
I just want to make sure you know that Liberty and Berlin are also having events, they're just before the next quarter.
Got it. I like, I like the focus on alumni, I think that's good.
Big Friday night. We have Liberty at Berlin and Olentangie at Orange and football, so there's going to be a lot of activity.
I bet. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafe. Ms. Halffield, the Treasures report?
Yes, sir. First of all, I just want to say congratulations on the preliminary information from the report card. That's amazing. Very excited for our students and staff considering we didn't have report card data for the last two years because of the pandemic. So I'm excited to see that there's results that aren't showing a backslide or loss in education. That's incredible. Awesome to see that. For our department, I don't have a slide presentation for the community tonight. Really just wanted to talk through a couple of things that we have in progress. We are working on some voluntary benefits elections for our staff. We've got that contract reviewed. We will be working with MetLife going forward to provide those for our staff and we'll include that in the open enrollment this fall. We are in the middle of the RFP for medical insurance. We've had several presentations thus far and have two more tomorrow. So once we wrap that up, we'll make sure we take the feedback and information that we received from presentations and align it with the cost-saving measures that each provider has offered and balance that out in way of recommendation to bring forward on the 22nd. And just in general, for our department, we are wrapping up our gap conversion. We have fiscal year audit in place. We've moved and transformed our department from one side of the, what is that, the west side of the building? I think. But we've moved and flip-flopped with HR, so we've had a lot of team movement and folks working remotely and coming back in and pulling some information. So very excited to have the team kind of back and settled and physically in place where they can keep moving forward with their progress for the rest of the year. So those are the things that we are working on and we'll have some items for, actionable items for you at our next meeting.
Great. Any questions? Nope. All right. Excuse me, thank you. We'll move on to public participation.
Yes, please. We have two public participation submissions this evening. If you would, when I call your name, please join us at the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. And then you will have three minutes to speak to the board. First, we have Ms. Courtney Bullware. If you would, please join us.
My name is Courtney Bullware and my address is 268 Olentangie Meadows Drive. I am here tonight because it was brought to my attention that there is a graphic novel available at Orange Middle School titled Flamer. It's currently checked out by a student, according to one parent. The excerpts I'm about to read are not appropriate for any child, most especially middle schoolers. As I read these, please ask yourself if you would be comfortable with an adult in charge of your children providing them with this book, some quotes. Suck any good dicks lately? Ugh, hot dogs again? What's wrong, Navarro? I thought you liked a big sausage in your mouth. Okay, who wants my hot wiener? Oh yeah, baby, slide it into my buns. And what if someone thinks my penis is small? I mean, it's not microscopic, but there's the age-old shrinkage dilemma. Fuck off. I wonder if priests jerk off. There's a part where you spin around and when I did, I accidentally plowed my face right in between her boobs. Holy shit, that's amazing. You are my hero. That's not love, that's called a boner. Ha ha, it's true. My dick gets so hard thinking about her sometimes that I think it's going to rip right through my jeans. We are each busting a load into this bottle. If you don't come, you have to drink it. This is a scene where group masturbation takes place at a Boy Scout camp. You're the faggot, you're the fudge-packing, fairy-cock-sucking, queer, pansy faggot. This is only what I have time to read, not to mention the illustrations in this graphic novel that include a boy holding a knife up to his wrist and a scene where a camp counselor is bantering with a student about his mom doing the student's mom and more. This is the third time I have read out of board meeting from wildly inappropriate, if not straight pornographic material that has been given to students by this district. The last two times were the previous school year, so Olentangie had an entire summer to make sure books like this were no longer in the libraries and yet here we are. Either the libraries were not checked or they were and this was deemed okay. And it's either way, it's completely unacceptable and there needs to be district policy surrounding library materials. This is not about book banning. It is about creating a safe environment for kids where adults are seeking to protect from rather than expose them to this kind of material. Material that is not only inappropriate, but that can be extremely triggering. I listened tonight as you spoke about student mental health. How does a book like this help? How does it fit the standard of maximum learning and academic excellence and how is it even legal to provide to minors? Students deserve better than this and I know Olentangie can do better. Be adults and set the example. Protect kids. Thank you.
Robin, I believe it's House. No, I didn't say that correctly.
Sorry, Robin Hughes.
Please forgive me, I'm so sorry.
Robin Hughes, 8553, Pondview Lane. Disclaimer: The views, thoughts, and opinions expressed in any text, website, or social media belong solely to the partnering organization and does not necessarily reflect the views of OLSD. If I caught you off-guard, let me read that again. Disclaimer: The views, thoughts, and opinions expressed in any text, website, or social media belong solely to the partnering organization and does not necessarily reflect the views of OLSD. I noticed this disclaimer at the bottom of the flyer for an upcoming Start With a Hello Week and it made me wonder, who is actually educating our students? The flyer doesn't state who the partnering organization is, so I asked Dr. Google. What Google turned up was that the partnering organization is the Sandy Hook Promise. This is a national nonprofit organization founded and led by several family members whose loved ones were killed at Sandy Hook Elementary School on December 14th, 2012. The intent is to honor all victims of gun violence by turning their tragedy into a moment of transformation. Start With Hello is a free program made possible by the support of the Walt Disney Company. In my research, I didn't find any red flags with the Sandy Hook Promise's website or the Start With Hello online info. However, I couldn't see the full Start With Hello is a free program made possible by the support of the Walt Disney Company. In my research, I didn't find any red flags with the Sandy Hook Promise's website or the Start With Hello online info. However, I couldn't see the full curriculum for the week and had more questions than answers, especially given who the sponsor is. Back to where I started. If OLSD is trying to shield this district from responsibilities for the programs happening in school, then can the district be trusted to provide appropriate vetting of all third-party programs? Educational research, educational resources in school should not require a disclaimer. By merely incorporating programs inside our schools, in my opinion, OLSD is endorsing the contact. Any program that comes into contact with our students should be fully vetted. If not fully vetted and approved, then it should not be used. It's the district's job to develop appropriate curriculum or have complete confidence in third-party organizations that the supply curriculum meets or exceeds district standards and stand behind what is brought into the schools. Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for your time. And if I may, second topic, totally separate. As you may have heard, the Biden Department of Education has declared its intent to go around Congress and change the rules concerning Title IX to now cover all sexual orientation and gender identity. This will endorse gender identity ideology in all public schools as a federal mandate with lasting effects on parental rights, children's health, children's privacy, both physically and mentally, and sports opportunities. The deadline for people to submit public content is Monday, September 12. As educators and parents, please let your voice be heard and consider making a comment. To comment, visit regulations.gov, and I have a slip of paper for anybody who would like the website. Thank you.
That was our last public participant.
Great. Mr. Rafe, would you please present the superintendent action items?
Yes, sir. I'd like to present the superintendent action items A through F for approval.
Can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
In a second. All right. Any comments on the superintendent action items? All right. Ms. Hafield, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion to enter into executive session as permitted by Section 121.22G1 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider the employment of a public employee. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
In a second. Any discussion on the move to go to executive session? The only thing I'll add is we will return and take no action. We will only return to adjourn. So with that, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are we going Liberty?
Liberty's fine.
Cool.[791.29]
I'll call the meeting back to order. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All right, any discussion on adjournment? No. I'll call the roll. Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrecourt?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien? Yes. Meeting is adjourned.